So I will. Call, sorry. I will call to order the town in North Stonington Sustainability Committee Zoom special meeting November 9th, 2021, 7:00 PM. Alexis Khan present. Oh. Did we lose him?
Oh, no.
Did Craig leave?
Yeah, somebody dropped off. It's you, it's just you and I that are the two that are showing up as participants. So hopefully he'll log back in.
We're dropping like flies. Well, I will. I guess. Kind of turn to like just while we're, it's you and I. Thank you for sending, thank you so much for sending that. The methane reduction plans that you sent to Iowa Capital Dispatch.
It was interesting. It was. It's amazing how sometimes when you need something, it gets provided to you. Bradovic, who used to be the beat reporter at the State House, she's a great reporter, but Tom Vilsex was governor when I was in the, in the State House. So, and he's now the Secretary of Ag. It's an interesting relationship there, but. Yeah, it sort of popped up on my Facebook feed when I got home after we'd been talking about it. It's quite interesting. So, but I think it's clear that there are additional things that can be done. The question is, is some of them are probably in a research basis. It might be interesting to see what kind of. Availability of sort of. You know, demonstration project money that the USDA may have available for those sorts of projects.
Right.
And then you, you, you put that all together and sort of have a, have a way to, to reach out to the local farmers. If there's a way that USDA can say, hey, we want to do a demonstration, make sure this was going to actually work in practical matter. You know, where do you get all of the bits and pieces to make it work? They often do that. So it'll be interesting. The other piece of that also would be that we probably should reach out to the FSI, the Farm Services Agency in Connecticut, or actually, I think it covers New England, just to see what programs they have coming forward. So it would be, it would be important to watch because that really is building a more sustainable agricultural base. And as we talk about local farming and the need for, you know, local farming, local farmers and the value that that, you know, we, we, we spend extra dollars on that and we're willing to do that because it's a local producer. It even adds more value to it when we know that they're, they're doing some things that are some of pioneering, some best practices that we really need to be able to put that something along with lines together. Might be more difficult than, than on first blush than what we think, but at the end of the day, you know, it's, it would be a great challenge to kind of overcome and see what happens.
Yeah, and the one thing I had noted, oh, sorry. So Craig, just for reference, what we were, we were talking kind of when we lost you because we had yesterday, I'll get, I'll give you the background, participated in our kind of first, I would say, one-on-one call. This was through the Sustainable States, States Networks Community Energy Challenge, and this is the one that we, Sustainable CT is partnering with the Great Plains Institute, and they're kind of providing technical assistance for us on climate planning, climate planning. And so what we learned on the call, and I'll certainly, Nate, please feel free to jump in, but what we basically, what, what they wanted us to do was hone in on the focus area where we would really want to, you know, of climate action, there's a lot, or climate planning, there's a lot that we can do. And so what does that mean for us and what do we really want to focus on? And so without drawing necessarily like a conclusion, I would say one of the things that came up as potential area of focus, there was a big conversation about waterways, but also the fact that we're an agricultural community, and this really differentiates us from probably a lot of the other. Sustainable CT is working with a lot of the cities and, you know, some larger municipalities. And so for us, you know, what does climate planning mean for us? We're not coastal. You know, it's really, we have a lot of ag and how is the, how are the farmers' practices kind of affecting greenhouse gas emissions and methane and that kind of thing? So we also talked about the access that we have to the aquifer in this area, and that's kind of a big asset for the area. And so, you know, whether there's kind of a way to address both kind of in one approach towards viewing what we can do on a. On, from the standpoint of kind of more sustainable agricultural practices that we might be able to introduce to the farmers if there's incentive for them. So Nate, do you have anything that you wanted to correct me or add to that? I mean, it's not definitive at this moment, but this was just kind of what was teased out of the discussion. And Nate's got some great kind of resources that he's, he's dug up, or I should say, information, you know, and it sounds like you already have a lot of knowledge on the topic too, from having come from such an agricultural community of Iowa. So.
We talked about that, right? Some last, last.
Right, exactly.
Last time, the methane sequestration and. That farm in Connecticut, yeah. So that's great.
I think it's, I think, I kind of take away that we had a great conversation yesterday. We were kind of, we kind of focused in on that towards the end. I guess my thought was, is one of the ways and one of the things that I think that the, that the committee really can kind of define itself over the next bit is going to really be to, I think, dive into this question of what, what are the sustainable things we can do? The, the idea is to create a plan for creating a resiliency plan. And I think that we've got this great resource in Great Plains Institute. We've got some terrific ideas to try to, to, to focus on a more rural flavor to what we're doing. But it's also one of those where perhaps that's a conversation that we need to engage the full committee about and ask that same questions. What are the things? We could focus on cultural-based issues, having that fuller discussion to help inform us, you know, the folks that were on that call to, you know, the other day, or yesterday, seems like a couple of days ago.
Yeah, right, right.
Today was such a long day. But I think it's, it's. Real, I think that to me sort of sees this committee being a steering committee to help really guide this because it's going to be one where there's, there's not a lot of energy, I think, that's going to be coming out of some of the other committees in the town on the topic in the near term. And if we want to continue to have this topic be top of, top of the table, top of the list, and, and in, in the minds of some of the newly elected folks, but also the folks that have been serving for a while, I think that we're going to have to sort of continuously put this. But it gives us an opportunity to have that conversation because we clearly have a grant, we clearly have resources that we can draw from. And I get the feeling they're going to help guide us towards some resources to give us a little more help along the way, whether it's consulting, whether it's, you know, helping us overcome some, some, some of our, you know, like I said yesterday, everybody who was involved in the whole thing was right then and there on the call. We didn't have some big staff we can staff things out to. This is, this is us and our, our capacity to do what we're doing. So I think it's, it's, the committee takes over that role of sort of helping guide us as to where we're going. And I think also provides us an ability to sort of spread some of the, the work obligation out a little bit as well. Because I think we're all pretty short. I know I'm going to have it be very, very difficult for me to focus a lot of energy on this from my day job, so to speak.
Right.
Want to continue working on the subject. But that committee can help spread the wealth a little bit, and I think that that would be a big role for what I see for this, this committee moving forward.
Right, and I just, this is, this is just for reference, I pulled up like my not organized notes, this is not by any means minutes from the meeting or anything like that, but I just jotted down things that came up while we were on the call. So just kind of for reference, Craig, you know, some of the things that were, were discussed. They did say that they'd be willing to join our Sustainability Committee meeting at some point. To kind of present like Climate Action 101, you know, what, what it entails and what it would be for, let's say, like to do an RFP for a climate action plan and that kind of thing. So I was thinking maybe at some point it might make sense to invite them to see if they'd be willing to just kind of chat with the committee about it. But yeah, Nate, to your point, it was, there was kind of different things that were thrown out, but I did feel like there was an emphasis on, you know, kind of regenerative farming and. Bob made an interesting point, which is that if we could really kind of get the, if we have something that's actionable and, you know, there's a way to get funding for it and it's really not going to cost the farmers, you know, any out-of-pocket money and there's a real advantage to them for it, that if we can get the ear of some of the younger farmers that are kind of taking over the family farms that are, we have in North Stonington, that that might be the best kind of angle because it's hard to, you know, maybe for some of the older generations to embrace something like this. So I thought that was an interesting idea and, you know, the way that we could maybe get some. If we end up moving forward with this and get anything that's tangible, that, that would be a way to kind of introduce it to them, to see what they think before we invest everything in it.
Yep. Yeah, I could see that being a, I took his point and I agreed with it as well. I think it's one where the. Trying to get the, the next generation to, to be involved is going to be very helpful on many, many levels. And I think the. Again, it's, it's trying to find, engage, who we, who can we engage with on the topic that's interested in that sort of work? I think it's going to be. That'll be one of our challenges we have to overcome, I think. So who, who do we have a good audience to work with? And it might just be that it starts off with, it's just a community awareness up program.
Right.
That's where we just kind of have to see if we can reach out to some of those families, see if anybody's interested.
Right. I do know Ben a bit, so that was the only, that was the person that was kind of mentioned. I would be happy, like, at the point at which we have something, I'd be happy to chat with him about it. But obviously, you know, I think it's kind of, once we have something more tangible, maybe.
There's, there's Bree at TerraFirma, you know her?
Right. I think that she would be really, she seems. Like they might even, you know, I actually know absolutely nothing about what she does in terms of manure management, but I feel like her whole MO is probably, you know, sustainable farming to a certain extent. So I wonder if she already does anything in this regard.
She may be somebody who, who we could be not only an advocate, but also a huge resource because if she's already working in this subjects, in this space, bringing her in as a part of this committee would be helpful.
Right. Yeah, um, do you know her personally, Craig? I mean, I've brought milk there, but I don't, I shouldn't know me personally.
Yeah, I mean, we've had a bunch of conversations. I haven't, I used to pop in there all the time, but the, the farm store is closed now since COVID, so I haven't, I've sort of lost that sort of like pop in and say hi and chat connection. I could certainly reach out. I'm not sure, I would want to have something.
Right.
She is like a super rad, super cool, also like very no-nonsense, I'm busy kind of person.
Yeah, yeah.
I think like bring like a, hey, we're doing this thing and they're like, I'm not, I don't want to bring her vagary, but if we have, once we just developed this a little bit, I think she'd be a great resource for sure.
Um. We, we went a little out of order, but I just wanted to also. Mention that, so we, kind of good news and bad news, I suppose. We heard back on the, we just heard back. On the Sustainable CT certification, we were, we got bronze again, so we didn't get the silver unfortunately. But the good news is that we were at 300 points that were certified. So, you know, 200 as a reminder was for bronze and 400 was for silver. So we were kind of halfway there. And, and, you know, we can carry over the points from the bronze, that everything that we got for the 300 should carry over. So it's just a matter of kind of getting the 100 more. So, you know, I was disappointed that we didn't get the full thing, but to see that we kind of got more progress towards there, and especially now that we have, you know, kind of this clean slate of being able to do more before the certification process reopens in the spring. The one thing I was going to do, and feel free if you have a different approach or recommendation, but what I was, as I said, it just came out, but what I was going to do is go through and see what we applied for, like something that we're already doing that we just didn't get full credit for and see what the reason is. Again, it's kind of those low-hanging fruits in the last period and seeing, you know, is it just something additional that we have to do or is it more just kind of amassing more paperwork, filling out a different form or something like that's more administrative, just to kind of see where we stand? Because if it's something where, let's say, like, it was an initiative where we started it, but we just didn't get the full credit because, let's say, it involved, it involved like an event and we did one thing, but we didn't do, you know, whatever, X, Y, and Z, but then maybe it's just a matter of making sure that that happens before next year. So I can, unless you disagree, I can come back with next committee with sort of my takeaways from that. Just to make sure that we kind of, you know, are thinking about getting the 100 points to bridge the gap for next year. There is any, any comments or disagreements or suggestions on that?
No, that sounds super reasonable. It sounds great.
Okay. The other thing we, there is, and I'll, I'll send it out to the full group since we're, we're small right now. But Bob reached out to me because there is a, an award ceremony. I've attended, I attended in 2019, I don't think it happened last year, but it's through CCM and, sorry, let me pull up Bob's email. CCM Award Luncheon, it's on November 30th. I doubt, Craig, I doubt you can, it's, it's from noon to 1:45 on November 30th. So. Doubt you can make it, but I just wanted to invite you at least. I'll send out info to the group, but if you have any desire to go, but I'm sure it's smack in the middle of your day.
It is, but I'll be there in spirit.
Um, yeah, so that's kind of where we stand on Sustainable CT. See what else? Do you have any, anything on the energy audit that you wanted to share, Craig?
Minor, I talked to some, I finally talked to someone who, this person thought that they didn't really have much in the way of like. Hands-on resources and it was all online, but they were going to refer me to the marketing department and I didn't hear from them for a week, but then just on Friday I got a call from the woman who I had spoken to about the grant. Previously, and she had gotten my name from who I talked to, this circuitous.
Oh, my God.
Call me back. I don't know yet, but I'm working on it. Like, I don't know how anything, how anything gets done. It's like, there's too many lines of communication, too many people involved.
Right.
Everything's like molasses. I think they're just kind of busy because they're probably ramp, it's like their high season is, you know.
Right.
You get higher, so.
Okay, well, let me know if there's a point at which.
If there's some way that more, more grant and resource. Availability is helpful, then we can link up and do that.
Right. Okay. Sounds good. Just another quick, I did. I did work with Jim Russell to make a couple more updates and add some things to the website. You know what, I meant to check this. I don't, I know that Mike was going to add in one of his. Like town updates, a mention of the Sustainable North Stonington website and also the fact that we're looking for more members. And I meant to follow up because I didn't think I saw it in the last update that he did, so I'll, I'll check with him and, you know, if he doesn't get to it this week, I'll ask Bob to add it. But just to kind of make a plug for the fact that we have this and, you know, that we're trying to add some resources. So he did. Change this, oh gosh, it wasn't supposed to be tip of the week. Let's see, sustain, well, it says sustainability tips, but, um, so, you know, if you have anything else to add. You know, this is the nasty, the, the one that you shared, Craig, I added that. So, and interestingly enough, here's the, there's the thing about potty-trained cattle. So just a plug for more content for this. I was going to add something, I was looking, I was going to send him a note to see if he could add an article that I had come across on composting. And that was, it was actually one of the things that I meant to bring up in this committee. There were a couple ideas that have been percolating. One was, you know, I know that we had discussed at some point. You know, whether there was an option at the transfer station to have like a composting program to bring, you know, so that people could compost kind of. Somewhere if they're not willing to do, you know, do it themselves at home. Nate, you don't happen to know anything about where that, anything about that, do you? Whether, because I think it was discussed at some point in town, but I don't think it obviously gained any traction.
I do not. It would be one where I would have tendency to say we could, an easy reach out to, you know, to the, to the dump and just say, hey, what do you have for composting? Is there, is there a community-wide space there? I don't know enough about it, unfortunately. I, I've only been, I've only actually been to the dump twice in my whole.
Oh, wow.
Living in North Stonington, and then one of those was a real quick tour about town with public works. So. So it was, it's, I think there's probably, I didn't see anything that was, that was composting.
Yeah, I don't think there is. I know that Mike in one of, he did sort of a, kind of like how-to, you know, public service kind of video that was promoted on composting and, but I don't think it was in any kind of, you know. Industrial, I don't know if that's the right word, but, you know, not for anything that was town-wide where you could bring your compost. It was more just like how to compost, I think. I did look on CPWM, I think that's the name of our, you know, trash pickup, to see if they had like a composting pickup for those that don't bring, you know, that just rely on the service to bring it to the transfer station. And from what I could find, if they don't seem to have that as like a separate service that they could do, you know, you have the recycling and the trash, but I don't think that they would be able to do it. But, you know, if people wanted to just go bring their compost to the transfer station, I was just thinking maybe that would be something that was doable. So I'll, I'll find out more about that, but I just wasn't sure if that rang a bell at all. Because I know it was discussed. The other thing I was just thinking about, I was giving more thought to the idea I'd come, kind of thrown out there last time on Meatless Monday, and I was like, you know what, this is just the wrong, wrong community for that. But what I was more thinking was, you know, and I talked to the Tin Pedler a little bit more about what they do. They do such a great job of sourcing locally and, you know, I guess, I think it comes down to, and we've had this conversation before about how we have such an agricultural community, but then where does one actually eat the stuff that's grown locally? You know what I mean? And so they've done a great job of like, their beef is Bariah Lewis beef and their eggs are from Ziggy's and, you know, they've like sourced a lot of their stuff locally, but what she was mentioning was that quite a lot of the produce and. Milk and things like that that they get are actually not necessarily from, you know, strictly from North Stonington because there's not always the vehicle by which she can, you know, they can order directly from some of those, you know, it's all like kind of just ad hoc, like relationship-driven. So I, I was, just kind of made me think like, you know, we, we do have not that much restaurant, you know, commercialized restaurants in the town, but we do have, you know, a fair number, you know, between pizza and, and, you know, sandwich shops and, and things like that. And, and even just, you know, a local, I know that, I think Economic Development had put together some sort of market for a time that was, you could pick up some local produce and things like that at, I thought it was the brewery, but I don't know whatever came of that. But, you know, just kind of facilitating, like what's, I know that the Lerner, I think it's, is it Bethany or I'm forgetting her first name, but she has a big farm and does a co-op and it's like, how do we get the restaurants in town to buy from that kind of thing, you know, and at least have, so I wasn't, this is again, very, very early stages of just thinking through things, but just kind of providing a mechanism to kind of like a, like a co-op for those farmers who want to participate and those, you know, commercial. Restaurants or food establishments, or maybe it's just like individual town residents to kind of like buy directly from the town. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. It's not codified.
I briefly talked to Mike about this. A couple of weeks ago, it came up.
Okay.
Just in, in terms of like a farmer's market or something, just again, a local clearinghouse that you could use to, whether it be on the wholesale side or on the, on the retail side. I think it's one where there's been different. Attempts to pull this together.
Right.
They've, they've met with. Some success and, and some resistance. I don't know, it seems like for whatever reason, the, the work in this area has never seemed to be finalized and successful. I know that there is a group of folks that do do some marketing of locally sourced products that I get through Facebook. Signal is the contact point. His son plays on my baseball team, so that's kind of how I got to know them a little bit. And I was actually looking at the possibility of taking a couple of my, my lambs, it's the fall, so the spring lambs are getting ready to go to harvest. And actually, in order to, in order to process an animal to be able to be resold sort of piece by piece as opposed to the whole animal, you have to have a very specific USDA licensed meat processor do the, do the processing. And there's a place in Connecticut that can allow you to, I haven't called them to find out what, what, what it would take to do this. But the Signors have got a group that they're doing some local sourcing of goods and services. And they, they have, I would have to send, when I get an opportunity to get in front of a computer, I'll send you a link. Oh, there's a kitty cat.
Sorry. Give me a way out, thank you. Sorry, guys.
That's great. I think it might be, if anything, just a place to get them into contact. And I think they probably have really sort of working on this from a business perspective, that this is what they do as, as a way of marketing local products and doing it in a way where it's actually a, a for-profit business, which in the end makes it a lot easier for everybody because if it's sustainable and it's economically viable, then let them do it. And what, what can we do to help, you know, trust down on the gas? Uh, and what, what can we do to help, you know, trust down on the gas to make it go faster type of thing? Because it is, it's that locally sourced piece, and then like we were talking about before, it's locally sourced, but then also having sustainable practices. You put those two together, you really, really add a level of complexity to what's going on in, in a positive marketplace. Way to be able to talk in the marketplace about it, so, uh, and market based on your ability to be sustainable. I think that's, to me, maybe that's a conversation where we ask him to come in and, and have a little more conversation with us. As a group, to see if there's a, a sustainability component to it. And if they are, then, then it to us, then it just becomes a. Us joining the bandwagon and, uh, helping, um, talk about that program. To other people and as we go around town, getting them connected. So I think it, it could be really helpful, but I think there's some movements that are already underway, just the question of discovering where they're at.
Right.
How we can help them.
I will say, um, so the first is, uh, I know what you're referring to about the farmer's market because I was actually on the subcommittee. I think it was a subcommittee of the Economic Development Council, I believe, um, and it was kind of led by, um, actually. Former colleague of mine at the bank, um, who was a town of North Stonington resident and. I believe it, we were having regular meetings and it kind of fell flat. Based on COVID, like we just, you know, started canceling meetings because of COVID and then I don't really know what ended up happening to it. But sort of the, I, I will sum up where we kind of left off, which was that. It seemed like there potentially was enough competition from local farmers markets that the farmers. Already were kind of a little bit stretched thin for those that participated in the farmers markets. And we were kind of trying to reposition it as whether maybe we're more going to promote, um, you know, those that offered. Or would be willing to offer some kind of farm stand or co-op like, um, just having almost like. Almost like a, you know, the wine trail, like have like a farm trail of like, um, you know, giving everybody. Knowledge of, okay, here within a centralized place where, um, North Stonington residents. Here's who's open on what days, here's what you can get at this place, you know, you can kind of do your, your rounds. Because I think a lot of it is just like, I would have no idea, um, where to get. Lamb, for example, you know what I mean? Because I just don't know who carries what. So, um, that's kind of where we left things off. I think. The, having a dedicated farmer's market was kind of challenged. But again, like, kind of centralizing it and the one thing that was interesting that was brought up by the Tin Peddler. Was that for a lot of their vegetables, they get it out of, um, kind of, it, it sounds like you're almost alluding to maybe something similar with. The, what was their name again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's Signor.
She said, we buy it from this, um, a lot of our produce from, it's not like a co-op per se, but like a. A group that has, um, different produce from different farmers in Rhode Island. Because it's too hard for them to source, you know, oh, this guy carries carrots, but this guy carries radishes, so even if. In town or not necessarily just in town, but if there was a participating network of farms where it could be like a go-to wholesale. For some of the, um, you know, that, that maybe there's a network that North Stonington could participate in for some things. Rather than it necessarily being just town-based, but you know, maybe it's Preston, Long and Down, North Stonington, you know what I mean? Something like that. But I just feel like, I'm almost positive that when you, you know, if you go to some of the local, um. Like the pizza restaurant or something, I don't think they're using like. You know, local peppers and seasoning, you know what I mean? I think they're just buying from the, the regular suppliers. Which is too bad because it's right here.
Hard to do that. You know, everyone, everyone wants to do that, but having a, a sustainable maintained. Source of whatever it is, peppers or otherwise, you know.
Right.
Really difficult. It's hard to choreograph.
Yeah, yeah.
Networks have to be able to be developed. And that's the part where there's not a good clearinghouse for it. I don't know, maybe that's where we just keep looking into it, keep sourcing it. Figuring out who's doing it and, and whether or not there's a way we can all help add more snow to the snowball.
Right.
It seems like they're trying to do that, right? Is that sort of like?
Did you say that, that, sorry, do you, um, I think you just cut out for a second?
I think you're, it sounds like the Tin Peddler is trying to be that resource in town to some degree, right? So maybe it's just a matter of using them and supporting them in that, or may, maybe I'm.
Um, so the interesting thing was, they're not necessarily the resource, but they're, that's the model that they're trying to follow. But the interesting thing was they basically said, oh, we, we want to do more with suppliers in North Stonington. But some of it is just that we haven't established the relationships or don't know who exists. So they, their take after the conversation, and again, this is very preliminary, just kind of like chatting. But was, oh, hey, if you could facilitate more of those connections, um, and you know. Kind of give us again, like the, what the marketplace is, if there is one for some additional, um, local farms. They would be interested in kind of even using more local, um, North Stonington products. But it was just like, they have some relationships, but then, you know, it's easier to use some that are outside of the town or outside of the direct area. I.e. Rhode Island. So it's just a, I know, I know it's going to be tricky, but even, even again, if it's. Not bringing back the, the farmer's market per se, but just more of a way centralized placed. I know that, um, uh, Katie's in town is, is great for that when it's in season. But you know, it's not open all the time and I think, you know, they, they, I don't know if they carry absolutely everything that's available in town. So it's sort of just like, is there more of a way to get what we grow here out to people in some capacity? So. Kind of all I got for now. Any other? Comments?
That's it, I mean, I think part of it is just keeping the conversation going, even with a couple of people, okay? Because it's, like you said, Nate, it's just adding the stone to the snowball, right? So a little bit of snow this time, more snow this time, it's all good.
Um, the one other thing I'll just make a, um. If it's okay, a shout out for, or a plug, I should say, for, you may have already gotten this, but, um. Sorry, let me just pull it up. I can't go. So I just made a donation, but, um, Mike Ergo is having a. League of Concert, uh, Environmental Action Fundraiser on December third. It's a fundraiser for, I think the League of Conservation Voters, yeah, Connecticut League of Conservation Voters. So I just went to, did, I'll, did, have you gotten this invitation? Okay, I'll send it to you, Craig.
Yeah.
But just wanted, I feel like it was. Topical, environmental action fundraiser. I just thought it was at least something I should share in the committee because it's been on the same topic.
There you go.
Do you know what he's going to be doing with himself, um, whatever?
I don't. Do you know, Nate?
I, I don't, I think the only conversation I had with him about it was, um, I shared a story. With a friend of mine who, when he was retiring and he, he'd been sort of a major leader in the community that I, and I. He said, I'm not going to make a decision on, I'm doing anything for six months. I'm just going to play golf. And then after that, I'll decide whether or not I'm going to get involved in something in the community. So I think Mike, Mike take a pause. I don't know. I, I, I think it's one where he's going to have to figure out, you know. Obviously, he's not sort of running the show, but I think he's going to be around and very involved in the community in a lot of ways, so. I don't know that he's defined his role for what tomorrow's going to bring. So might be a good place to ask now.
Yeah, good. He's going to be involved.
Ask now for what, sorry?
Yeah, ask now to see if you can get him, get your person in line. To get him going, you know? Say, hey, I got dibs.
I was hoping he, because this was kind of his baby, um. I was, well, maybe a lot of things, maybe I thought we had a preferential, I was like, oh, he wanted the Sustainability Committee. So I was thinking maybe he would join the committee, um, considering, you know, he, this has been a passion of his, but. He's probably started a lot of other things, so I'm thinking we'll get more special treatment then. He's probably started a lot of other, uh, initiatives that he wants to be involved in, so.
Yeah, he's going to be a busy guy. Again, nothing, yeah, you never know unless you ask.
Alrighty, well, unless anybody has anything else they wanted to mention?
Good.
Alrighty, well, motion to adjourn. Alrighty, thank you very much.
Enjoy the evening.
Thank you. Thanks for joining both of you. Bye.